Okay.
That way I can walk out of here lighter than when I came in.
That's good. That's a waste of program.
Should it be here or?
No.
She's, uh, she said that a young boy committed suicide. It's not the one. She's had that. She's related somehow or been caught over. All right, I'm showing at five thirty. The mic is on. The tape is on. Let me call this meeting to order and let me start with a roll call from Janelle.
Mayor Cooktop.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Mop.
Here.
Mr. Westbrook.
Here.
Ms. Arrow is absent.
Okay, thank you for coming, everybody, and we're gonna start right off with a proposed storage building for Dave's Auto Body at Ninety Two Seventy Galley D Road. We have anybody here from that? Are we expecting anybody? Let's move on to the last, and we'll go forward if somebody comes in.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to do that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll move right on with the storage container for Discount Tire. Is there anybody here from there? Okay, so do I have a motion to move that to second last? So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post. All right, next is graphics change on a ground sign for Parker Corporate Technology. Hi, that's you?
That's me, thank you.
How are you?
Hi, thank you.
All right, first thing we have some comments by our planner, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My memo's fairly brief dated April fourteenth, two thousand fourteen. The applicants requesting to install a new insert into an existing ground monument sign for their property located thirteen ninety East Highland Road. Property is zone limited industrial. Reviewed a sign illustration plan dated March seventh, two thousand fourteen. Again, minimal comments. The panels are being installed in the existing sign that I believe in all likelihood conforms to requirements of the code. However, this should be confirmed by the applicant and/or the city administration and documented on the site plan illustration. If that existing sign is conforming with the requirements, which again, I believe is, then I don't see any reason to not approve the proposal as submitted.
Any other comments tonight, Janelle? All right, anybody have any comments on the planning question?
What about screaming? As far as, uh, no. Turn on the screen one. Wasn't it something?
No. The screen is not another one, no. I just want to just point that out. You're home straight.
Did you just overlay handles on an existing?
I'm saying that's got a fracture, that's. I don't have a question.
Any other questions, comments? What do you feel, uh, most in total?
Well, shall we accept the applicant is submitted?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post. Well, I'll tell you what, you're on your way, Carl. Thank you. All right, have I seen me? Okay. All right, next on the agenda.
Hi.
Hi. Where are you from?
Discount Tire.
Okay, we're gonna, uh, do you in a little bit. We kinda moved you on the program because we started right on time, believe.
Yeah, I've had a tough time getting out.
Yeah, you do sometimes. All right, next is signage at seven eleven. Do we have anybody here from seven eleven? Do I have a motion to move them to the end? So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Post. All right, next is a proposed site plan for, uh, the amendment to Villas de Teramina High Road.
How's everyone?
Man, well, I, you know, this was, you ever play that game where it's wall? That's what I was doing with these drawings. I kept looking at them and saying, what's the difference? So you have to.
Sure, no problem. Uh, first off, uh, just to give you some history, and I know that most of the members were here on the board when we passed this, uh, Villas de Teramina project. We had one amendment since we started, and that was to take the forty foot wide units down to thirty-five foot, and that amendment, I think, was just a couple of years ago. And we essentially didn't make any more units. We just kept it the same number, but we, we moved them into thirty-five foot wide units because they were attached, and we found that the buyers wanted single units as opposed to attached units, although we still have some attached units throughout. What this changes and proposed changes for today is that back when I had this project designed and put together on Bella, we were going to take Bella all the way through, and there was a high tension line that existed and a pole that was right in the middle of the street. And, uh, that's somewhere right by over here. And I have negotiated and tried to negotiate since two thousand eight, when I started this project, seven eight, with the resident that lives over here that has the pole in its backyard and the resident next door. Now, the guy that has the pole in the backyard is more happy to, to have it moved, but the guy that's just to the right of him doesn't care if the pole stays there until, you know, life ends, and that's what he basically said to me. It was gonna cost about a hundred fifty thousand dollars to move two holes. One hole being, uh, sorry, one, one pole being, um, on the site, my site, and one pole being on the site of, uh, residents of Old Hills. In return, what we're gonna do is we're gonna cut it across this back corner of sub lot seventy-four, which is the guy who's resistant and does not want it to, to run, uh, to be moved away from his home. And for the life of me, if somebody came to me and said, hey, I'll pay a hundred fifty thousand dollars to move a high tension line away from your house and put it to the backside of your property, I'd be jumping up and down in joy and saying, when can you start? And I would sign on the dotted line. Well, I couldn't get that to be accomplished. And there's a longer story behind it, but I don't know that I need to get into, uh, the issue of why this initially went into the ballot, this person opposed it because he thought helicopters were gonna clean his backyard.
I remember that, yeah.
So, um, in any event, what we're proposing now is to, uh, realign Bella and go around that hole. Very simply, I'm gonna lose five lots. I'm happy about it, but, uh, the residents in here are very happy about the fact that they won't have, uh, anyone, uh, next door to them. They'll basically, uh, have no neighbors and there'll be a lot of green space up into here, and this is the gaseous in over here. So what's happening essentially is that, uh, you come down Bella and everyone said, well, why don't you just cul-de-sac it? And I said, no, because I said, I need the flow, if you will, to go around for snow piling and for garbage trucks and everything else, and it would be a pain in the butt to not do that. I mean, it certainly would've been really easy to just throw a little cul-de-sac here and a little cul-de-sac here on both sides of that hole and be done with it. But I chose to go around it and bring it around, so that's that. There's two lots that were next to a community building over here, and these two lots, they're right here. You see them? Right here, they're ninety-three and ninety-four. This is all filled. So we've come to the conclusion that it's just not gonna be worth the cost to develop those two sites. Now, I've been paying taxes on those improved lots now for, since two thousand eight, and now making that decision, just try to take them off and be done with it. In addition to that, I have one other consolidation, and that is on Alexis, and that sub lots fifteen and sixteen, we've consolidated into one lot. And by doing so, we're gonna just make that lot, the house, a little bit wider and offer it as a three-car garage, but I'm also gonna put a two-car parking field right here, and the residents in this, on the street are very, very happy with that. So they're getting us some additional parking down here where there was no additional parking. They're very happy with the fact that this is a green space over here, the two residents that are on each side of it, uh, they're, they're very happy with that, and, uh, they're okay with the, the realignment.
Yeah, it all sounds like it.
Yeah, so I mean, there's not, not anything major. I read the comments of the city engineer.
Well, let me have read it into the minutes, okay? Go ahead.
We just have engineer comments for this.
Oh, just engineer, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The applicant should submit a plan showing what areas are changing versus what was previously proposed. If modification to general plan is approved, development shall be replanted to Summit County. If modification to general plan is approved, a revised mass grading plan will be required. If modification to general plan is approved, a revised roadway and utility plan will be required. The plan shall include location of proposed individual house laterals for storm and sanitary and water connections.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
No, those are separate, they're pretty different. It's too much of a lot, but. Yeah, it, it, it is what it is. Where do you have? Well, the, the residents are happy. We're putting in Antonina now, that's, that's going in, 'cause it was all engineered and done. There's just one slight change. I probably should've mentioned that when I did go there, but all we did is shift seventy-three over, and given the fact that we weren't able to finish up on Bella, we were able to add one onto Alexis and on Antonina rather. And, uh, there's already seven of the lots committed to it.
Well, that's a good thing.
Well, that is a good thing.
All right, so, um, are you all right with what they're suggesting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
We can include that in our motion to follow those recommendations. Any other parents' questions?
How many of you drove down Bella? This was, was built already? Well, Bella's partially built. Bella's built up to where the squiggly line is on the one side, the other side's already done, and most of these houses are already in. I shouldn't say all of them are in. We've got, uh, sixty-five is, or sixty-eight is gonna be staked out for construction, sixty-five is staked out for construction, um, sixty-four is lot hold already, so most of these are already being taken on the street, but it comes in from, from this little stretcher we named Maureen. Maureen Way.
She got the littlest slit, I don't believe that. Holy heck, are you in trouble? Okay. Any other questions, comments?
You gonna lose any power hydrants there, Joe?
I'm sorry?
You gonna lose any power hydrants?
No, not. Every, all improvements that were existing stay. Nothing, nothing changes in the entire site as far as the water, the sewer, the storm, all stays. In fact, in the comments of the city engineer with regards to the lateral connections, seventy-three, uh, or seventy-two B will be the only one that will pull its connections from. Everything else will remain the same. That's the only change in the entire subdivision. All these lateral taps are already in, unfortunately.
I remember that's been going on for a long, long time. All right, uh, do we have them all from that?
I'm gonna make a motion and we accept the site plan amendment for Villas de Teramina.
Have we mentioned on the engineer's recommendations?
Second.
I have motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Post. All right.
Thank you, very soon.
I'm glad, Dave, I'm glad you saw our announcement. Well, you can. Yeah.
Thanks.
Everybody. All right.
Thank you. Take care.
All right, next on the agenda is a proposed variance on twelve sixty-five Juniper Court.
Hi, that's you.
Yes, sir.
You have the question?
Ah, it's you.
Great. All right.
All right, uh, on this one, I think the only problem was elevations and engineer, uh, recommendations, yes, then?
Engineer, yeah.
How about you?
No, nothing.
And there was no planning, uh, comments on that?
No.
All right, uh. I know there was concern here of, uh, drainage. All right, we're gonna have that taken care of, that's gonna be good. We've got, okay, I'm hearing that from you, I don't have my engineers, so I haven't talked to them about this, so.
Did you read the engineer's comments?
I haven't seen the engineer's comments, but I'm, I was under the impression the reason why we're, we have an issue is the separation between houses. You require fifteen feet, we have thirteen point one five. I didn't realize the drainage was.
Don, why don't we, can you read, you know?
Yeah, let's read the comments, and thanks for that.
Approved conference of development, development plan requires a minimum of fifteen feet between buildings. The proposed spacing for the south side of twelve sixty-five Juniper Court proposes a spacing of thirteen point one five feet. Engineers only comment is that the proposed grading must ensure positive swell in the side yard so as not to cause any drainage issues to twelve sixty-five Juniper or the neighboring property at twelve seventy-three.
So that's what I need you to tell me, there's not gonna be any problem?
Uh, well, absolutely, the plan shows a very defined sway on both sides as well. So I would agree with that, some would be floating, make sure that happens.
That's the right words to say.
Have we heard from any of the neighbors? Anything?
Well, let me put it to you this way, I hear things all the time, but I'm not sure it's this particular lot and the engineer is not here.
Okay.
Because there have been some complaints about some lots that they are addressing to make sure they're good, so if this has gone this far that it appears before you, I am assuming that everybody's gonna be all right.
Both of them will be notified too, sure. We haven't heard anything.
No. Any other comments, questions? All right. Do we have, uh, recommendations for a motion? Motion to approve? A motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. We're all set, John.
Thank you.
Big one.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll see you next time.
I will.
Okay. Now we're gonna back up and go to the proposed storage container at Discount Tire. That's you, Mop. Do you happen to have a card for me?
I don't.
That's all right. Right now, not on that.
I'm sorry, how are you? Very nice to meet you.
All right, uh, we had some comments on regard to this couple of ones, start with Brian.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and it was provided a photo this evening that shows it's an existing storage container, so my comment on my April fourteenth memo states that they wanted to install it when it is indeed already installed, um, and that's adjacent to the rear of the building. It's a ten by twenty-five, uh, storage container. My only concern, um, with this request relates more to the screening of the storage container. I recommend that either, um, some type of an enclosure be utilized with buildings to ma, or materials to match the existing building, or, uh, if not, then, um, some type of landscaping. Now landscaping, in this case, would be pretty difficult 'cause it's already all asphalt back behind the, the building, so really it'd be a type of a screening, um, screening wall of some sort to screen it from view, and if that can be accomplished, then I believe the request can be, um, approved.
All right, um, Dennis?
My comments are basically the same as Brian's about putting a screen wall around the, uh, north and west sides of the container. Is that container permanent there? I mean, or same one all the time?
Yes.
Okay. Then I think you'd wanna paint those yellow doors something to match the building then also, 'cause that's the only part you'll end up seeing.
Right.
After the, after it's screened.
Yeah, I, I should say that that is, we can go a little smaller. Depending on the way we're gonna screen it.
I was just concerned if they take it in and out all the time, if they don't, they just, it's just there for storage and then you empty it out. Okay.
You got a lot of storage with tires, and we have some problems with tires being stored outside, so I appreciate you trying to keep them out of sight.
I'm helping very much.
Yeah.
Have you thought anything about screening? Because, you know, you have a beautiful building there, but as it was being built, already people were coming to me and saying it's too big, it's too tall, it's too this, it's too that, so people look, you know, they pay attention. So, uh, I know sooner or later there's gonna be complaints, and then when it gets to that part, then it's not good for you, it's not good for the city, it's not good for anybody. Have you thought about doing something to screen it?
Yes, uh, basically there's the dumpster.
Yes.
So it would just basically be an extension up there and would probably go a little bit taller to screen it. So it would come out just a little bit.
Oh, that's great.
Further. Sure.
Same material?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
So it's mostly been tires stored in there?
Yes.
So that means that the, uh, there's supposed to be tires stored up above the building as far as they had space up, you know, that's why the building.
Yeah, right.
There's a mezzanine in there, and, uh, that's storage as well. This is storage of.
Used tires. Yeah, it's gray.
So that way, that's, uh, that's a thing that's been a problem since forever with old tires. What do they do with them nowadays? They grind them?
They grind them. Wood chips, there's high school tracks. Wood chips is a new big thing. Playground, not wood chips, but.
Yeah.
Playground.
Like the mulch type. Some of them have mulch, but they put the tires, well, at least they're using them, and they're not huge piles breeding mosquitoes and all the things.
Not too many big piles.
But Dave, Dave, you have, there's, I'm sure there's still some left in, in Polga, but not here. All right, um, any other questions, comments, or is Janelle? No? All right, do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
I have a motion to accept, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post.
There he's gone.
Yeah, I'll have to get him.
All right, um, we have no one here from the proposed, uh, building at, uh, Dave's Auto Body. Do I have, uh, I, I think there's a lot of things going on there that there really need to be somebody here for.
To explain what he's, yeah.
So, um.
Table it.
Table it, and, and we'll go from there. Do I have a motion to table? Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we don't leave, uh, we're gonna adjourn here, but don't leave because we gotta sign a bunch of stuff, so.
So it's just the seven eleven, was there much, is there anything?
Oh, yeah, that's. Turn right there.
Because they were here before, is it just?
Yeah, their, their timeline ran out.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So it's the same plan as far as we can tell?
As far as I can tell, yeah. And after Brian's comments, they did remove one sign to get it underneath the total.
Yeah, or originally there were, yeah, there were two.
Yeah, they were.
You got drawings today, so you wanna move forward with that one? Thank you, Dennis.
I, I, it's the same thing.
Well, you know, it looks better. I mean, some of this stuff, you change in signs, basically it improves the way the place works. It does the old signs get fucking ragged. Concerned, was there any for any, you got a pretty expensive, yeah, you got a pretty extensive thing there, it's two pages on the signage thing. It's all right.
Just want you to know I'm doing my job, Mayor.
Yeah, you're really doing your job on this one.
Don, my, my concern is if they're not sure of the meeting, I think we should table until the next meeting, and I don't think we should be acting on behalf of any of these guys in here. That's my feeling.
Well, they do show, uh, here, they're gonna send their sign plan version, they're gonna give us any, any. Seven eleven people here too, so, but, but, I mean, if you feel that, I'm, okay, I bet we just, just wanna hear what's headed thoughts on it.
Yeah.
It was passed months before, and there was one problem now, and they took care of that to his satisfaction, so actually we're kinda re-passing.
We had something new today, was that?
Yeah, I thought it was a review of the list of the sign.
Yeah, she, um, corrected what she submitted to what Brian had suggested.
Today was interesting.
Yeah, I, I have that here, and I took a look at it, and it, it addresses the issue of the additional sign, which I think that goes back to two thousand eight, Mayor, Mayor Remember that? We, we had addressed that issue of that additional sign on that, um, on that facade of the building, and planning commission at that time said, no, you can't have that one, that, that, that facade doesn't, um, isn't entitled a, a sign, and so they, they removed it. It was submitted as part of the, the first proposal that I reported on with my April fourteenth memo, and the, um, revision that came today that was provided by, um, planning commission secretary shows that that sign's removed, so with that said, they comply with the square footage requirements, um, and, uh, the only thing that remains outstanding is the ATM sign, and there's a note on here that said that's gonna be fabricated and provided by others, so it would require coming to the planning commission at a later date.
So most of it's really administrated?
Well, you know, this, this is that age-old thing where you're taking some signs, you're changing ownership. It has to come before the planning commission, but they could almost handle it in the building department, uh, but we are involved because that's the way the law is written, but it's basically, uh, actually been operating as the seven eleven for at least a couple of years, and, of course, I'm not remembering right, Dennis. I know I see the seven eleven right out the front, but it was two thousand eight.
Yeah, if it's expired, it was two years ago.
Two thousand eight, is that, what, did I hear that?
That, that's when BP reimagined, was in oh eight. It was a year ago when they came in.
Year ago.
Was it a year ago? Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a year.
But I was referring back to oh eight when we dealt with the issue of the sign on that other side.
All right, so at any rate, um, they already lost money because they had to reapply for a permit, so they've been, right?
They had to reapply to planning commission.
Well, that was a waste for them, and I don't see any, you know, I mean, to what you have, you're concerned about it, but, uh, but what do you think?
I think that we should have the representative here from either the sign company or the, or the seven eleven arguing on their behalf, that we shouldn't be arguing on their behalf. I think we need to have somebody here to, there are problems to come.
All right. Well, it's up to the other two guys. We hear both sides of the story, and I have no problem either way.
These sides are already placing some, one or two.
There's a temporary banner, I think.
Yeah, you know it's a seven eleven. I can't remember what's there, but, you know, it's a seven eleven. So I'm good with it either way you wanna go. What would you like to do? Would you like to table?
I'll have a motion, it'll be table until, uh, uh, either the sign company or somebody from, uh, AP seven eleven comes in.
We have motion, do I have second?
Second.
We have motion and a second. Any other discussion on this one? Any other discussion on this motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay, so they're tabled now. Anything else? This is what's so hard. All right, make sure I have motion to adjourn. Motion.
No.
I didn't see any of them, so. But you're watching, you can keep me straight, so thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Does somebody think this? Okay. Motion and a second?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, John. We should be pulling time away. Your family.